I'd like to call our February 19th meeting to order. Madam Treasurer, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Segwin?
Here.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Here.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Here.
Mr. Hauser?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here. Okay, moving on, if we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to, Anne should, Anne was saying Annie may introduce JBS?
Yeah.
The Superintendent?
Oh, I will.
Do you want me to introduce the Superintendent and Treasurer?
Yeah, the whole group, we figured you're our person. Okay, well, welcome to the Lorraine County JBS. I would like to introduce the Superintendent of JBS, which is Dr. Glenn Faircloth. Right here, step up, sir.
It's gonna be on TV.
This is Dr. Glenn Faircloth, the Superintendent, and then we have the wonderful award-winning Treasurer.
Wow.
That's an inside joke, the award-winning Treasurer, and that is Cory Thompson.
Cory.
She is, oh, but we, you will hear that again.
The best part of Cory is he's a pioneer alumni.
I just heard.
And then Mario.
Mario.
And then, of course, we would like to introduce Mario. He's our Communications Director as well. Is that everybody that I'm introducing? Yes, okay, but this is our representation for JBS. Are they having words or what are we doing? I don't know.
If you'd like to say anything?
They've got words, video presentation.
That'd be great.
And then we get out, you guys just hear it.
All right.
Once again, I'm Dr. Faircloth Superintendent of Lorraine County JBS. This is my 13th year as Superintendent at the JBS, I got here in 2012. Over the many, many years, we have a lot of changes. We have grown some building projects and things of that nature. The JBS is a 53, almost 54-year-old institution. We started in 1971, and with Career Technical Education, it was a government-rolled initiative to create vocational education for some students that could not or just didn't do well in traditional school. But over those years, things have changed, so now we have transitioned from vocational ed to Career Technical Ed. So now you're seeing a more highly-technical programs throughout the country. So when you go into different labs, they not this oily floor and dusty thing, you're seeing high levels of thinking, high levels of creative thinking, that is, and you're seeing a lot of different aptitudes that students must have. Here at the JBS, under our roof, we sit close to 1,400 students. We have a few satellite sites throughout Lorraine County with our 13 Associate School Districts, which obviously Alaria is one of them. And with those programs, they also receive resources that we have here. Most of our students will be part of a competition of sorts. A couple of years ago, we had one student that was able to compete on the world championship level, and in a few years there, we had another world. One was in Russia, I forget where the other one was at. But most of our students will win awards, and they go nationally through California, things of that nature. We are one of the premier Career Technical School Districts in Ohio. There's 49 of us only in Ohio, and we spend all of our service certainly in school districts. We're 13, we've got some further south of Ohio that have over 30 such Associate School Districts there. This video that Mario will facilitate will show some of our programs, which you might see some familiar Alaria students from the past or even present in there. In our programs here, we also have an Adult Education Program that's actually going on in the evening. We also have an Adult Diploma Program, and what that is, is throughout the state, Ohio Department of Education said, what can we do? In Ohio, the ADP program is called the Adult Diploma Program, different from the GED. So this Adult Diploma Program, what it has is students who were foreign students who didn't complete, dropped out for whatever reason, and now they're able to come back, obtain their high school diploma, and actually receive a Career Technical Program, i.e. welding or something of that nature that they can take with them. So now they have something in their toolbox, so to speak, that now they can begin to earn a living wage that's very productive for them. Mario will present the video as we talked about there, but at the end, we will open it up for any questions, maybe if you see the video, or maybe if you came here tonight with any questions. Mario?
I think my team has the greatest jobs in the world. Yep, so fitting, we have the Alaria School District here, so we actually, every month we do a Student Spotlight, and that Student Spotlight is correlated to a specific Associate I don't know how much of you guys know about Career Technical Education, but it is at School District, and then obviously, one of our Career Technical Programs. the forefront of talent. When we talk about talent, we talk about students. Like Dr. Faircloth mentioned, we have over 30-plus Career Technical Education Programs And if you're not hearing it, please champion it. under one roof. So this is Junior Charlies Cannon, which I think is pretty telling. Education and Career Technical Education is workforce development. It's workforce mobility. A lot of people don't know this, students can come in and out of our school district. And the state of Ohio is in a crisis right now when it comes to talent. So just because you start with us your freshman year doesn't mean that you have to stay with When you look at four-year colleges, students are not going to those colleges. us your sophomore, junior, or senior year. So this is a testament to a student that was with Alaria and decided, hey, like, I They're going to Career Tech, they're not knowing what their career plan is, what that's want to try something else, and so she came here her junior year, or her sophomore year going to look like, and so, you know, I will say, the LCJBS is at a different focus right student. now. We really want to be collaborative with our 13 Associate School Districts, I actually say 14, because I think it's really important that we elevate and support the Lorraine City Schools in that effort. And I will tell you that Career Technical Education is going to be a continued conversation. I was at the Ohio ACT Seminar, and the state is pushing Career Technical Education in traditional schools. Every student should have the opportunity and have the information to make very informed decisions, and so we want to work with Alaria School District to make sure that they have the infrastructure, they have the support, they have the career technical expertise. And so it's all of our jobs. It's no longer just an Alaria student, it's no longer an LCJBS student, it is a Lorraine County student, and it's our job to figure out what that looks like and make sure that every student has a career path, because every student is not made for a four-year career pathway. Maybe they're set up for a traditional school and then going into our Adult Career Program, or a CT student that goes into our Adult Career Program and then into an LCC or TRIC Fast Track Program. So what I can tell you is, please follow us on our social media accounts. We are getting inquiries every day from elected officials to employer relations. We, they are trying to understand, what are we doing from a talent perspective? And I'll just give you this last sound bite, if there's any questions, we would all be happy to address. We had a student last year that academically just was not, was not jiving, was not doing well, decided to come to us and graduate in their welding program. The student called, left us a voicemail, was like, I don't know who needs to know this story, but I just started doing my taxes, and my W-2 was $67,000 this year, and he just graduated from LCJBS. And I think those are the stories that are transforming families, they are transcending stats that we read about in Lorraine County and across Ohio, and so what I can tell you is, please follow us on our social media accounts, because we're doing some amazing things, and we want to replicate that across Lorraine County with all of our schools. So that's my soapbox.
Great. Thank you. Some questions? No, that was quick and dirty Career Tech, but here at the JBS, we have programs, and a few of you guys got a lead that kind of already talked about some of the programs that we have. So we have programs in auto collision repair, house apology, and the Alaria Spotlight, she's in our bakery program, but on the other side of Bakery IT, have a culinary program where they ask for cooking, and they, most of those become chefs and so forth. And Charlies, she presented to the board, was that last one?
Last one.
Lab board meeting, and, because she had won a competition and things like that, you know, and then she's from Alaria, and she talked about how great the program is, but she's one of the many students that we have that go off and make competitions. And the cool thing about the competition piece is not just the competition itself, what I appreciate more is that the board has approved, and a lot was funded to happen, is that these students often get to travel out of state. You know, that might have been their first time ever on an airplane, first time certainly in those types of cities, and experiencing different things from that culture. So that's the beautiful thing that we get, and we get students that come back and they , I always see share that mostly, like, wow, I remember why I got a chance to go to Tampa, Florida, for example, or I got to go to Arizona. And when they go there, they're just wild, because maybe if they go this time of the year, and if they go into Arizona, there's no snow and it's warm, so that kind of blows their mind, hey, this year, like, we're in short here, so that's some additional conversation that you get outside of their war experiences. And those things are not taken lightly. They not, these are high-level, you know, I know most of you all won't get a chance, but when you go judge and see, these students are coming from all over the state of Ohio, and they there and they do business. I mean, if these instructors have them sharp, they have them ready to go, and if they're not ready to go here, then the instructor will send them for competition, because they know that the JBS name is on it and the reputation's on there. And culinary is one of our premier programs there, they have won awards all over the country. They the team to beat. When another school comes in there, they're like, oh, wow, watch out for that JBS. So it's very competitive for them, so beautiful baby, and seeing them even in the community. I live in Alaria, so oftentimes, I'm at a barbershop, or some students come in there, hey, yeah, so I love those conversations that we are having. So if you have any questions, like Mario said, you can follow us on our website. We're not doing a tour today, but you're welcome to call and set up a tour there on the times, there, try to do that, but I will say, we call ourselves 10 acres under one roof. So even if it was one building, square-footage-wise, it'd probably be more equivalent to about six to seven buildings, based on some of the buildings, school buildings that are built in Lorraine County. So we have an upper level, lower level, and of course, this is your base level, with huge programs, so it's all kinds of neat stuff.
My daughter graduated last year from JBS. She went to Alaria High through 10th grade, and then transferred in the Cosmetology, but then ultimately the Spot Tech, which was a new program. And she got a job probably a month after graduated at a fairly upscale salon, and, you know, does nails, facials, loves it, so it's a great program for her.
Beautiful program. And Adult Program too, we have colleges as well on the Adult side. We have hot air high demand, some of our new initiatives there, and you guys personally should hear about it, we will be working on the CBL program, so that's going to be on the Adult side, but we will fuse that with, now they changed the law, it used to have to be 21 CBLs, but now they lowered to 18 for CBLs, but you only can drive state sign. So, which is going to be wonderful for us, because that's a natural progress, and so I use a mechanic program, some of those type of transportation programs that quite naturally, if they're working on it, they may have to drive them one day, so to have a CBL, have a chance to begin to earn them as they graduate, and then probably finish up in the summer or something like that, but that student's not quite 18. So, and that's a huge program that we're working on, so we've got some parking lot issues that we need to fix and all that stuff, but the CBL program should be coming soon, some other logistical things we have to do, but that's going to be huge for Lorraine County.
I think a lot of superintendents will be happy, because they can't find bus drivers.
They can't find bus drivers, right. That's a big problem. So hopefully.
You have essentially driver's ed program.
All right.
So we know driver's ed is a huge need for this area, from a barrier standpoint, so understanding to duck your bus, understanding the economy and how our programs align to that, to make sure that we're addressing the economic needs of our communities.
Yeah, so way back in 94, I did attend JBS, not with your law enforcement program. So two-part question, you guys still have law enforcement, and also, I know through the presentation that the young lady attended her sophomore year, only way back in my time to attend JBS, we'd been juniors and seniors, so how did that work out?
Well, we don't have law enforcement anymore, but we do have a fire safety program, so we transitioned to more fire safety, that was off the demand of shortage, but we have been in conversations a little bit about public safety. As some of you all may know, it's a shortage in the police demand, so we talked to a couple area police chiefs, and we're like, hey, how can we help? Because I think they also have lowered some of their qualifications to be a police officer just because of the shortage of them, and it's going to be a high demand there. And you mentioned about Career Tech mainly coming in your junior, in junior year, and then you can do junior year and senior year. Two-thirds of the 49 Career Tech Centers that I mentioned all have 9th and 12th programs, and what happened, not all of them necessarily started that way, but when they found out that you were decreasing the amount of chance for the programs that you already had to be successful. For example, if you're 11th grade, depending on that season, one season, we had a large amount of students that came in that wanted to do those trades. The reason why that was, you had so many programs on TV where you had women doing trades in construction, all these home designing programs, all that, so that became a new way. So let's say you had all those students that come in there, so now you're losing out students for HVAC, welding, all those programs, now those numbers are depleted. So now it's like, how do we fill those and wait in there? So we end up expanding the 9th and 10th grade to have that opportunity, so that became more robust, and then it also adds an opportunity, just like a student may not be a good fit at a traditional school, they also may not be a good fit here. So it gave them a chance to come here and say, hey, you know what, I don't think I like this, and they can get out before it's too late. Because when they come to the junior year, and then they wait till the end of that and say, well, no, I don't think I want that, and then they senior year, and maybe they go back to their Associate School District, they missed out on a lot of things. So we began to get a better holistic student and to be able to create programs that would last, because now some of our Career Tech programs, we do go down to the temporary where they can receive credits for that. As a matter of fact, what that allowed us to do is also, some students, when you went, this wasn't possible, but we're allowed now, some students have dual certifications. And the reason why is because they were starting so early, and, which was huge, because imagine, like the board member mentioned, our daughter did cause, and when we brought in another program, depending on that model wasn't there, she wouldn't have been able to get both. Just wanted enough time, because we couldn't start them early, but now you can start a little bit early and check grade year some of the programs, and now they can get those credits on their qualifications.
Before that, if you don't want to jam in, is, again, in 94, that wasn't very robust, so it's about student success at this moment, so opportunities for 9th and 10th grades is all about exploration, where they get the opportunity, like I said, instead of just going to pick my trade, you know, the trade that you go to, law enforcement, that 9th grade and 10th grade year, they get to go do what, six different programs, they get to try, while they're here, so they can then have the opportunity to say, is this what I want, they're fixing the right programs they want, they're going to go successful in it, instead of trying to take that chance that junior, senior year. So again, it's about giving the students the opportunity, choice, giving them the opportunity to see what's available for them, and that's what we want to be our success. And success is not just getting that certification, but also finding out about yourself, and finding out what you want and like before you go and make commitments potentially either here or at a college where you start spending some money, you know that before you actually leave Lorraine County JBS or the district, so that's what we do in the partnership. So you're the one that actually kind of opened that up, and we used to have a very small program.
Yeah, we had a small one, too, yeah.
Really, why not let every junior, you know, freshman or sophomore come in here and try to get an opportunity to see what is available for them and make some choices without having to make full commitments.
It's a better success rate, because probably in 94, when you was here, I bet you probably saw a lot of students say, ah, this ain't for me, and they left.
I left.
That's success rate, and I don't know if it was because of the program, but imagine if you had a chance to experience that a little bit, and you said, no, I don't like that, and guess what, now you've got these other five different programs early on, that you could say, wow, I really like this welding change, didn't know much about it, now I'm in it. And, you know, we have many families that are traditional welders, so they come in, their dad was a welder, their mom, grandfather, they think they get, they like welding, but they get in there, they don't realize how hot it is, they don't realize how dangerous it is, you know, and they say, you know what, I don't like this, I know granddad and dad and mom did it, but this not for me, but I really, really love masonry. You know, so that gives an opportunity, because we had low success rates when we just had juniors and students. A lot of them were completed, because they had no, like you said, I don't know why you didn't enjoy it, but it just didn't work out for you, now you probably had to go back to Alaria, that's where you come from.
I went to Alaria High.
Okay. And 94, yeah, that was a while back. I rather went way before that.
It's 1994.
Some other people. You've got to put that 80 in front of that number. In the 80s.
Yes, I'm with you, Glenn.
Yeah. Any more questions? If not, I thank you all for coming. We can get out your hair so you can finish conducting your business, and thank you guys for allowing us to host you all this evening.
Absolutely.
If snacks there, please take some, we'll clean it up later, so don't worry about it. So thank you guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. To introduce our board, we have Mr. Brent Parker, to my right, Mr. Mike Gebhardt, to my left, Mrs. Annie Karstoffen, who's Vice President, but she's also the Alaria City Schools Board Liaison for JBS, correct?
Yes.
Is that what the, I don't know what the title is, but.
Appointee to JBS.
Appointee, okay. And Colleen A. Holt, our.
Award-winning.
Award-winning Treasurer. Okay, we have no board, or do we have board recognition?
No.
Nothing tonight, no presentations, no visitor comments. What? Okay. So our meeting minutes from our last meeting have been posted, the February 5th meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Colleen, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye. Our Board of Education items, there are none. Treasurer action items.
Yes, I have a couple, thank you. To accept the financial report for the month of January 2025, which includes all the reconciliation investment reports and cash report, and to approve the attached list of purchase orders in order to comply with the district's purchasing procedures as detailed below in the attachment, and that is all.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept the Treasurer's action items?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Does anyone have any questions, or not moving on, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye. All right, moving on. Treasurer other, do you have any?
I don't have any other, I do have a small report, I just want to remind the board that the ethics training is on Public School Works for completion, a couple of you finished it, a couple of you didn't, if you need a reminder email, I could forward you another one. I'm looking at.
I was going to say, are you pointing at anybody?
Sounds good.
Okay. And that's it.
I did, my.
And you're going to get it for me, thank you.
That was like six months ago.
I think I don't mind this one.
Tag, you're it.
All right, Superintendent action items.
Thank you very much. First of all, to approve the, we have several overnight field trips for the middle school students, grades five through seven for robotics, this is the state tournament in Dayton. Then we have another one, it's the eighth-grade middle school robotics for the state tournament in Dayton. Then the next one is the high school robotics state tournament in Dayton. If you remember in the past, they were one-day events in Marion. Well, they've made them two-day events in Dayton, so it's a good thing, but a bad thing, you know, they're traveling, they're gone, it's more expensive, but the fact that we have teams that made state is a wonderful thing.
That's true.
So, also to approve the overnight out-of-state field trip for JROTC to Fort Knox for a drill meet.
That's nice.
To approve the Kioga Community College MOU contract, this is for CCP, for some of our students that go to schools in Kioga County, and that concludes my action items.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the Superintendent's items as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Madam Treasurer, please call the roll.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye. All right, moving along to our Superintendent's Personnel Action Items.
Thank you. First is to approve the, we have several overnight field trips for the middle school students, grades five through seven for robotics, this is the state tournament in Dayton. Then we have another one, it's the eighth-grade middle school robotics for the state tournament in Dayton. Then the next one is the high school robotics state tournament in Dayton. If you remember in the past, they were one-day events in Marion. Well, they've made them two-day events in Dayton, so it's a good thing, but a bad thing, you know, they're traveling, they're gone, it's more expensive, but the fact that we have teams that made state is a wonderful thing.
That's true.
So, also to approve the overnight out-of-state field trip for JROTC to Fort Knox for a drill meet.
That's nice.
To approve the Kioga Community College MOU contract, this is for CCP, for some of our students that go to schools in Kioga County, and that concludes my action items.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the Superintendent's items as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Madam Treasurer, please call the roll.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye. All right, moving along to our Superintendent's Personnel Action Items.
Thank you. First is to approve the appointment of the following certified administrative staff. Some of you may remember Linda, she actually worked with Lisa Licht the year that Lisa passed. She is a retired administrator that helps a lot of the districts out. We have an administrator that's going out on leave for a little bit, and she's going to fill in. She does a great job. Also, to approve the appointment of the classified staff as listed below. To approve the relief from employment of duties during a probation period as listed below. To approve the retirement of the following classified staff. Teresa Murphy worked with us for eight years, and Denise Stone worked with us for 26 years, and we wish them well as of June 1st. They're still with us for a bit. Also, to approve the resignation of the following classified staff member. To approve the unpaid leave of absence for the following classified staff. And then we have a retirement of a certified staff member, Ann Marie Nosse, she's been with us for 23 years.
Wow.
So we wish her well as well. To approve the resignation of the following certified staff member, it's a sub that I don't believe ever started. And then to approve the following supplemental contracts as listed below, and I will have some to introduce, but this one is the choreographer for the musical coming up. To approve the following athletic supplemental contracts as listed below. And that concludes my staff personnel items.
Sorry.
Did I miss something?
No, I had that motion in a long spot. You still have appointment of certified and approval of the stipend for the classified, I apologize.
Oh, I thought I just read that, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, I did.
All right.
We're good.
So we're good?
Oh, wait, then, oh, I see.
Yeah, I apologize.
Nope, number 12, let me do this before the motion, to approve the appointment of the following certified staff substitute teachers, and then the payment of 40 hours as we do every year for Ms. Steidler, who does a great job of getting graduation already. Now, I will say, we just need a motion.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the Superintendent's Personnel Action Items?
So moved.
Madam Treasurer, please call the roll.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Parker?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye.
All right, could I introduce a few?
Absolutely.
All right, first of all, Heather, do you want to introduce the athlete, or not athlete, Or not athlete, well, they were all athletes at one time, but the new coaches.
Absolutely. I'll start with Jackie first. We have Jackie Velo returning to us for track. Yes, please, stand up, so everyone can see you. We all know who you are.
Stand up.
What year is this, Jackie, 33?
I don't think she wants to say.
Oh, she does.
13.
No. Long time.
And we will be adding, as the head coach, Isaac Johnson. He's been with us for several years, on the boys' staff as an assistant, and has also done some football coaching for us as well. So we're excited to have him.
Yes, welcome back. So I just have to tell this story, I'm sorry, Jackie, you told me, and you know, I'm going to tell. So behind Isaac is Isaac's dad, Tim. And Jackie told me a story that when she was 10 years old, that he's the one that got her running. Yes, so kind of a whole family affair there going on, and I think it's gonna, are you going to come out and help, Tim?
No, I am.
So that's great, we have a whole family affair going on there. So welcome, and thank you for taking the time to work with our children. All right, so then let's move on to, I believe it is...
Superintendent report.
Ah, there we go. All right, so we have a lot going on, but first and foremost, this Friday, we have two events. One is in the Performing Arts Center, Eastern Heights Elementary, who works with Disney, is putting on Aristocat's Kids at 6:30. So if any of you have little ones, even if they're a little older, I always enjoy watching the elementary, but that's at 6:30 in the PAC. And then at the other end of the building, I know this, because I'll be going up and down hallways that night, is the championship game. I think at 4:30 starts freshmen, and then right after freshmen, roughly around 5:30, quarter to six, will be JV, and then our varsity. Both teams have two losses, so this is for the SWC championship against Berea. And it's going to be a game, I assure you. As I've said all throughout the season, they're fun to watch, they really are. So hopefully, well, I'm not even going to say hopefully, we're going to come out on top. Then on Saturday, the 22nd, we have, I can't believe I'm saying this, but pioneer, our kindergarten registration for our earliest learners over at Ely School from 9 to 12. We are not having them do preschool that day, we're separating the preschool registration this year, but kindergarten registration, 9 to 12, at Ely Elementary, so please pass the word out. And we will put some robo calls out for that. And again, thank you to Dr. Fairclough, Cory, and Mario for hosting us tonight. It's always good to highlight our partners, and I know we have a lot of students at Alaria High that come out to JBS and are very successful at JBS. So thank you again for being a great partner and also hosting us this evening. And that's all I have.
Okay, Board of Education, I know Mr. Parker has something he wants to say.
I do. This afternoon at Northwood Middle School, we had a little incident with a, every parent that has kids with dental work and retainer's nightmare. One of the girls threw their tray out, and on their tray was their retainer. So we had two staff members, Mr. Capacetti and Mr. Castolnik, that actually put on gloves and went through the trash to find it, and did find it, and were able to get it to the girl. So saving the parents a lot of money. So definitely, those two staff members, I very much thank you for going above and beyond.
Was that your daughter?
No.
Because I can say I did that at Prospect Elementary years ago. Yes.
I picked up my daughters this afternoon, and I heard about it, and I said, "Oh, thank you for doing what you do." But no, it was not her.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything?
Was it you or that dug through the, or was it Bo that lost it?
I would say it was Albert Eaton, Mr. Eaton, who was the principal at Prospect.
So you lost it?
You lost it.
No, he got it out of the trash for me. The principal did.
Well, now they have these cases that you're supposed to take with you that I don't think my kid ever used.
Yeah, yeah. They have the ones that hang around the neck now.
Anyone else have anything, board members? All right, we have no executive session, so we can adjourn. So do we have a motion to...
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, please call, I'm sure there's no questions about that. Please call the roll.